Good evening. It is six o'clock. I'll call our meeting, uh, city council meeting for July 23rd, 2019 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Koch. Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Six members present and Councilmember Koch did notify staff of his absence.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick update to the agenda. We're going to, so item nine C on a new business, we have to postpone that to the next meeting. There's some working issues that they're working on, so that will be pushed up to the next meeting, is it correct? Okay, and then we're gonna replace it with an emergency ordinance. Troy's manly working on a commentary right now, so he'll be joining us shortly to help with that. But we'll read that in at nine C. So, with that, I'm looking for John. Are you okay, John? Are you ready to go?
Ready.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and start with presentations for A. A presentation of thank you letters by Mayor Ortega for the Fountain Community Veterans Fair, and John's gonna help me with this. I'm gonna move down to the way here. And also, I think I need Paul Price, Adam Baker, Kate Hatten, and Paige Water to join us as well.
Yeah, I don't have an order, so, um, anyway, I just wanted to, you guys heard me talk about it a few times already this, probably the last couple of months, and I'd be remiss to say, and I, you know, John and I sat down with a citizen back in the fall, probably early winter, who posed a question, so what do you do for veterans here in the city of Fountain? And really got us thinking, so we came up with the idea of possibly hosting some kind of a veterans event to get information out to veterans. We didn't know what that would look like. So, Don contacted Bob McLaughlin with Mount Carmel and kinda got the ball rolling. He kinda volunteered his staff and people to kinda join in, and we came up with this idea of a veterans community fair with Kate with Peak Military Care. I know the YMCA's been very helpful, and of course, and they're not here tonight because, and you may see some sadness in my face, but school starts in two weeks, and so, uh, school district, all the administrators started working yesterday, and so they're off at a retreat, doing their principal and administrator retreats and things that they need to do to get ready for us to come in next week and kids as well. So, they weren't able to make it tonight, but they were also instrumental. They gave us a building to host this thing in and did all that. But with your all's help, you were able to help us get this inaugural fair going, and it really, we didn't know how it was gonna go. We were, didn't know if we could expect two people, if we could expect 2,000 people. So, we kinda went middle of the road, got about a hundred and some odd people. We had some really good presenters, we had some great booths and things set up, and there were people actually interviewing for jobs, and so I saw a couple of friends of mine who were there in ties, and it kinda threw me off a minute there, but they were there, ready to interview and work on jobs, so it was great that I was there. I don't know if any of them got a job, but I didn't get any reference calls, so hopefully it did work out for some of them. But thanks to you all for your help and expertise in helping us move this forward. The YMCA offering free childcare and all that stuff for families here in Fountain and the veterans, and I know I, you know, I, I'm a son of a veteran, I don't really, I wasn't part of the military alive. I guess my only interaction is with all of my friends that came in and out of Fountain and because of the Army and all that stuff, and I just know the impact that has, and even today for my father, who is very involved with the Vietnam Veterans Association here, and he goes to Mount Carmel every week and meets with a group of guys, and it's just really, for him, it's really gave him a sense of peace and something that he really looks forward to, and I think it gave him a sense of purpose, too. And good for my mom, because I think she was gonna go crazy within retiring, but it was a good event, and I, again, I wanna thank you all for coming out. So, we've got some letters of appreciation we wanna give to everybody.
Yeah. Thank you for your help. Yep. And one's for you, and if you wouldn't mind passing one out to Bob. And hey, we got pictures, so. Okay, Kate, thanks for your help. We got him a coin there as well. Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Pictures.
Thank you.
And the last person I do want to, again, recognize is John. You know, John, he really took off with this thing and understood the importance in being a veteran himself, and, you know, I think we have, we're fortunate that we're able to pull in our own veterans from the Army, and we've got, you know, Chief and John have come in and really just used their expertise from the Army and brought it here to us. And so we're fortunate to be able to pull a lot of that in, and they were, they had the wherewithal to do that, but a lot of our enlisted and things like that, it's a little bit more difficult, and it's harder for them to navigate that world, so I think this is our opportunity to try to do that. And John, again, I wanna thank you publicly for all the work that, you know, just coordinating this and putting it all together, and we're hoping to get to the school board meeting in the next couple of meetings and present Dr. Owen and Chrissy McGee with theirs as well, because they were very instrumental for the district as well. So, once again, thank you for everybody. Okay, our next, we have no board commission committee appointments. I have item number five, city council agenda requests and announcements. I'll start with Mayor Protem.
Mr. Geek.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Applegate.
Okay.
Mr. Lauer.
Just real quick, Fountain Creek Watershed District Board of Directors will be having the monthly meeting this month, this Friday, two o'clock in the council chambers here. Looks like a pretty light agenda, so if anybody is interested in coming and speaking to the board, that, this meeting would be the time to do it.
Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, I have something that Todd and I have been going back and forth with Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, and talked to you about this, Mr. Mayor, just yesterday, asking the council if they would support us sending a letter to Pike's Peak Regional Building Department to their Board of Directors, which is three elected officials, and asking them, as we work with our citizens, to come into compliance with the carports, that if they would reduce or short-term waiver of the fees for a short amount of time while people are trying to get those permits done and come into compliance, and I'm hoping that they will do that with the bit of money they took in with us last summer from the two hailstorms, and sometimes up to two roofs people had to put on. And so we're asking them if they would waive those fees, like I said, short-term, using the proceeds of the permits people already pulled for their roofs and things they did as they do hail damage repair. So, does anybody, the worst they can say is no, right? So, but that would be a nice thing for citizens and to kinda try to help out as they, as they work on that. So, Phil, is that okay with you? Send that letter?
Uh, yeah, as you said, the worst thing they can say is no. I can see some reservations on their part, because then they may think they have to cater to the whole county, but why not?
No, we're just asking for the, we're asking for the citizens of Fountain to do a short-term, and they can say what they consider short-term, or whether they wanna do it or not, but at least we're trying to help our citizens out a little bit that have to possibly pull that permit.
Go for it. I'm not afraid of the word, no.
Okay. Sam?
What are you talking about for a short term?
Well, the resolution ordinance we passed gave nine months for people to come into compliance with their carports, so I would hope, you know, that Todd was gonna include a copy of the ordinance with the letter, or Scott, whoever's sending the letter. They were gonna include a copy of the ordinance, and then hopefully they'll just, would do it for the nine months that they happen to come into compliance. But we're not gonna ask for a specific term, that could be up to them.
Right. I have no idea. That's true.
Where are we gonna put this notice?
It's a request, it's a letter requesting to the Board of Directors, the Pike's Peak Regional Building.
I think it would actually come before Rich.
Well, Roger, who's, I don't even know what his title is up there. He's a director, told us to, told me to send this request to the Board of Directors. And the Board of Directors, it's three people, it's Commissioner Waller, it's Trustee Stevens, and I'm not positive on the third person who it is. Richard, you would probably know. But that's what they told us to do.
My only concern, we talked about yesterday, was, I guess, just how do we determine the shortness of it? And I don't want it to happen like where, when we were looking at the ordinance, and everyone, because I said grandfathered or whatever I said, and of course, nothing is ever just, everyone's gotta read between the lines that aren't really there, but everyone thought, well, I gotta go buy them now, so I can not have to pay this or do whatever, and it wasn't the intent. So, you know, just making sure that it's for those who, who I think have gotten the notice, and one has that list of people in the city who either have one and didn't comply in the first place that they were supposed to, or have now got one that should have complied anyway. So, it's not anything for anybody coming up new that from here today on, they decide, okay, well now I can get it for free, I'm gonna go in and do it. It's not the way it works. It's really intended to help those that need to come into compliance for whatever reason. I, you know, there's half the things I don't even know I'm supposed to come into compliance with until someone says, hey, did you do that? You know, and so I think that's a reasonable ask, and if they tell us no, then, like you said, unless we asked, on behalf of the citizens.
Right. That was, that was the, I'm sorry?
Do we want them to go and point out?
I believe Juan said, he's not here, but like 135 letters or something, I heard vaguely somewhere. Christie, oh, Christie's here, I'm sorry, can't see Todd's head.
There were about 150 letters that were mailed out.
Okay, and not all of them were to people that had, you know, huge ones, right? They were just for a variety of reasons.
No, it was just anyone who had a carport.
Right, okay, so, yeah, so this would be the people who have to go up, they come to you, you determine that they do need to go up to regional and get a permit, and then they would, that would be either waived or, we're hoping either way to reduce, we're just asking, so, okay.
Okay.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
All right, so I think either I'll sign it, you'll sign it, we'll both sign it, we'll get that off and see what happens.
Right, and I don't, I don't know how often they meet, I don't do their actual directors' part, I don't think they meet monthly, so we'll see. All right, thank you.
Okay, nothing else? Okay, I did want to mention, I think tonight is our first live stream, like, it's actually people are watching right now. Is this correct? The live stream of the meeting tonight. So, it's a request that came in probably over a year ago, and some staff's been working really hard to see how we can do it at cost and not have to bring in a whole, whole big production team and do all the things they do, but at least they'll offer this. So, those of you who are watching, welcome. I know they're, they've recorded, I think the last two or three, just to kinda work out the bugs. We've already gotten some comments. I can assure you that in my cup is fountain water. I don't trust bottled water, so I wouldn't drink it. So, that was a question that came up, because they thought that we were using tax money to pay for bottled water. I bring my own water from my own house, so, and I know it's clean and it's good, non-detect water, so we'll go from there. But if you're watching, thank you, and hopefully it works out tonight, and if there's glitches where, this is our first one, that's like actual live, so please just bear with us, and we'll move forward from there and kinda work those hinks out. And then the second one is just an announcement, not really an announcement, but our Car Springs Business Journal Mayor's Panel is on Thursday. They'll be participating in, I was in last Thursday, the Colorado Community Action Agency or Association, and they really just deal with poverty, there are multiple agencies that work together and just working with poverty and homelessness and those things, and so it was just kinda neat to speak to people who actually are on the boots, or on the ground in the boots doing work, and, you know, and trying to help, you know, everybody get to the resources that they need, and I was there, Monument Mayor was there, the mayor from San Luis, I don't have a mayor, but person down there, and then Commissioner Avila from Car Springs City Council, so, pretty well-attended little group, and it was a neat, neat deal, so. With that, we're gonna go to public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. Please sign up with the clerk part of the meeting. Council may not be able to provide a immediate answer or direct staff to follow up out of respect for the council and others. Tens, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Our first one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see, it's two ladies, Ms. Orange and Ms. Miller. Is this about the same thing? If you would like, you wanna come up together?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you can do that. I don't know if you wanted to do separately, or, because you both have carport concerns in Comanche Junction, so if you would rather just come up together, it'd be great. And then just say your name again for the record.
My name is Sherri Orange, I live at 945 Desert Circle.
And Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Susan. I want to speak about carports in Comanche Junction, which is made up of manufactured homes. After reading the dimensional requirements in section 17.232 of the manufactured housing subdivision districts, I realized that their homes set up in such a way that they don't meet these codes, not all of them. The unconventional configuration of these plots and the location the builder was allowed to place these homes makes it difficult, if not impossible, for us to conform to the code in putting up carports. My husband wanted to get building permits for our carports, but because of the setback requirements, he failed. The first carport we put up at 933 Desert Circle is for my parents, who are 95 and 87 years old. We wanted to protect them in summer from entering a very hot car, and in the winter from having to scrape snow and ice off their wind screens, also to protect their vehicles from hail. If their carport met the setback code, it would be located in their house. The carport we put up at 945 Desert Circle saved both our cars last year from devastating damage. All of the cars in our neighborhood that were not under carports were totaled. The carports are well-constructed of steel and supports set in two feet of concrete. They are very strong, they also add value to our property. They do not block our neighbors' light, air, or view. We talked to our neighbors before construction to see if they would have a problem with us putting them up. They all said it was fine and to go ahead. The stated goals of code compliance is to, quote, "preserve the attractive appearance of the neighborhood and to enhance and safeguard the quality of life in our community." We are of the opinion that our carports satisfy all these goals. The Fountain Municipal Code states, quote, "Codes can be repealed or modified and made reverberative." I'm asking you to consider the special conditions in Comanche Junction and to allow us to keep our carports as they are. Thanks, thanks a lot for hearing me.
Okay.
Is that all?
She kinda represented both of us.
Okay.
I suffered the damage, like many of us did, and I lost my two cars in the roof, and it sort of buried me financially, but we rebounded over the year and saved some money to, to put the structure, a steel structure, four-by-four steel posts buried in the cement. And again, mine as well does not meet the light, the sidewalk, air, or the view of my neighbors, and I, we've had pictures.
Yeah.
We feel it has added beauty and value to our home and our neighborhood, and we're very fearful when storms come and we race home because of that.
Yeah.
But we are very afraid that once we lose that, there's gonna be another car, two that'll be gone, and, and we just, we just are pleading to allow somehow a way to get on the agenda to allow for a grandfather amendment that would allow us to keep. Do thank you for saving that time.
Okay, Christie, I like that. So, and I know that neighborhood, and they, for whatever reason, when a developer came in, we were able to do what they did, they were allowed to. But what do we do in instances like that where they were built differently, with setbacks and things? How does that, does it still have to go to the appeal?
Correct. I spoke with both Ms. Miller and I spoke with Ms. Orange's husband, both in person and over the phone. They were provided various options on the carports, including applying for a variance before the board adjustment. They were also offered to reduce the size, relocate. The problem within the specific subdivision is that many of those lots are very small, and they were never intended to have any sort of a garage when it was developed or instructed to begin with. So, it's not unique to just this one, there are various small lots throughout the entire city that faces the same hardships as these residents do.
So, at this point, have you gone the route of the variance yet?
Not yet.
Okay, and did you explain that, what that process looks like?
We have, I did provide very detailed email, both of them outlining that process.
Except we're going to have to get permission from all of the utility companies before they will give us a variance. We have to pay $350 to do that, unless whatever, I don't know if that would be included in this new time period of not paying fees. But anyway, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, and with our understanding, after we go through all of these steps, there is no guarantee they would let us, give us permission to have them.
So they were built on top of utility easements?
Yes, they were.
So if the utilities needed to get to, I know who's here from utilities, and I don't know what utilities are built on top of, but if the utilities needed to get to have access to that, you would have to tear down the carport, right?
Not necessarily.
I mean, it would, I'd say you'd have to, it would be a possibility that you might have to take it out, right?
That's true.
And so do you get the variance in the first place when you first applied for it and put it up?
No.
So you just put it up?
No, they said they tried, if they understood, you tried to get a permit, and they said, no, you cannot put it here.
We, because of the low, the size and the dimensions of the plots are really unusual. And we even have one house that is located in this, what is it called?
The easement or, 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 utilities and so forth. The plan shows that the house is, I do.
Can he come up to the microphone so that people can hear?
Pardon me?
Can you come up to the microphone, because now that we're doing this live feed, no one who's watching it from home will be able to hear you, and it's gonna sound really weird.
Thank you. The easements, my in-law, Charles Orange, sorry, Charles Orange, 945 Desert Circle. I'm speaking about 933 Desert Circle, where my wife's parents live right now. The easement behind the house comes in ten foot, and the house is five foot from the line, so the house is in the easement.
On the, on the plans that we looked up on the computer, no, they show, it says it's ten foot.
It's ten foot.
But Charles measured it in the spot, so.
And things haven't been drawn to, I mean, well, they were drawn to scale, but the information is not correct. We have the neighbor on the corner of the cul-de-sac, the code requires 20-foot setback for the house in the front yard. His house is six foot from the sidewalk. I think the property lines on the other side of the sidewalk, which would make it maybe nine or 10 feet. So like my wife mentioned, the builder was able to do whatever, apparently. No fences allowed in the front yard, but he put up a fence in my parents' house, or my wife's parents' house, that comes out to the sidewalk. These things have been blocking the easement for 20 years. We haven't had to move the house, but we're certainly willing to accept the risk of tearing up the carport if there's a need for that. But Christie, like you said, gave me the instructions or someone in her department about, pardon me?
You call me Christie, Suzy.
No, no, I saw him about Christie. About what was required, and at the time, before the June 11th meeting, you could have two single carports, two inches apart, is what I was told, but you couldn't have one double one. And as you all recognize at your meeting, I assume, and that didn't make much sense, having all those supports down the middle of your carport, and so it was changed. And so when I found that out, and I knew there was no way for us to meet the setback requirements, I've flipped a few houses and worked on them, I always get the permits, but there was no way to get the permit. And then Christie, or someone in her department, told me about the variances. There's a $200 fee, and you go before a three-man committee here in the city of council, after filling out the form and state your reasons why you think you should get a fence. If that passes, then you go to the county, and you, $350 fee, and all of the utility companies have to sign off on you building something in that area. And then if that works out, or maybe the first step would be to go to the El Paso County Department and get the, and make sure your carport is structurally sound and would meet the codes to be put up. and make sure your carport is structurally sound and would meet the codes to, to be put up. And, um, to me, uh, uh, it seemed like a long shot of getting all those approvals from, uh, the county, the city, and, uh, the, all the utility companies, plus, uh, expense and a lot of time. Um, so I decided not to do that. And, um, I would think, uh, my thinking is that the city council would be considerate, uh, especially since the codes haven't been enforced or applied for twenty years. And if they were, how many houses would have to be moved? The code also says the front door of the house has to face Main Street. Many, many of them don't.
Thirty-one of them, yeah, just, uh, Desert Circle and Mahogany Way. I didn't connect to them.
Um, so there's many code violations. The carport is one of the least ones, I would think. And as my wife mentioned, you read the goals of the codes and the carports meet the goals. Health, safety, uh, enhanced quality of life. My mother-in-law back here is ninety-five. My father-in-law, he's eighty-seven and a half. And for them to be out of the sun when they get in the car, uh, the car's not been heated up or, um, pardon me?
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up? Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we're looking for the photos because they didn't make it down this way. Okay, we got the photos here. Um, thank you for your comments. Um, you know, the.
Thank you.
Tough thing about the carports is it was intent, intended to allow people to be able to do them because it, it wasn't previously and, you know, that was the, the big criticism while the code hasn't been enforced and, but it has been enforced and, um, not everybody followed them anyway. So it's, it's, um, it's a, uh, as we find, as we move forward and, and look at things from the past and, um, we gotta, we gotta fix it at some point. Um, and again, this is the really, and the intent of this is to, um, allow people the opportunity to have the carports. Um, and there's a process for everything that we have and, um, some people may not agree with it and, and, but it's still the process. And, and it's, it's, it's try to, we try to make it fair and equitable to everybody. Um, and I, and I understand that these special circumstances come up, um, where, you know, you have a developer who's allowed to, to do things differently than everywhere else. And we're finding that a lot. We had a whole conversation last week, um, about our roads and, and the standards that we were using when the growth first started versus what the standards are now and reasons why, some of the reasons why we're in, in the positions we are with some of our roads. And so, um, as we move forward again, things change and, and codes and standards and things change and, and we have to keep up with them as best we can. And, um, you know, uh, I don't know, with the code, it's, it's very difficult. In my time here, whether, whether as council member or in this position, um, the code has been probably one of the most contentious things that, that we've had to deal with. Um, because it deals with people's property rights and, and some people are, they want us to be ultra, you know, enforcing and, and hammer everybody for every little tiny infraction and you have others who are on the opposite end and don't want us to do anything and just leave me alone. It's my property. And so we have to find that balance and figure out how can we best help everybody, um, uh, live the life they want to live on their property. And that's, that's the, that's the difficult part about being up here and, and, uh, you know, we're criticized for doing one way and, but then at the same time, we're, um, you know, criticized for not doing enough. So, uh, I would suggest go that variance route. Um, uh, it sounds like you didn't, you didn't even get the approval in the first place. I think that, that, you know, I can't say that we're going to let you get away with it and, and then we're going to have fifteen other people show up next meeting and say, well, if they got it, I should get it too. We've got to stick to standards and the processes that are in place. Um, and so I, I apologize and I, I'm sorry that you're in that situation. Um, and I, I don't know what else to say on that one, so, um.
Can I make the final comment?
You have to come up to, to the mic.
I'm willing to go through the variance. Um, but if I fail in having, getting all that approvals, will the council then come and try to help us?
But you didn't go to the variance in the first place. You went ahead and put it up anyway.
Correct.
Yeah. So do you, do you see the, the issue?
Yes, I do. I think the issue is the county hasn't enforced it and so we think, well, we can do what we want to. It's been that way for twenty years and if you start enforcing it, where is it going to end? You're going to require me to move my house? I think a class action lawsuit might be in order. Not, I'm going that way at all. I wouldn't.
I mean, we all have choices to make. I don't know. I, uh, again, I understand that there's.
Your answer is no.
My answer is no to what?
Or the council's answer. If I fail in the variance, then that's it. You will not help us enhance our quality of life for my agent parents and for us aiding to be able to keep our car out of the sun, out of the hail, out of the ice and snow, and it's not bothering anybody, but it doesn't meet their code. What about the spirit of the law?
Right, and I think you take it to the variance route. I don't know what the council can do for that. That's not our job. Uh, our job is to look at the code and figure out how we can provide it, um.
It's not your job.
I don't see how it is.
Buck stops with the planning and the code, not the city council.
Hmm, the buck stops with the process and the, and the code. I guess, well, yeah, it does. Um, I get your point.
This one's truly with variance board and Ms. Orange, I'll be happy to speak to you as well. We've, the variance board, um, they've, they've been very flexible on different things. So afterwards or later on, each member will talk to you about that process. But truly, that's not their, uh, that's not their role. That's why we have that board. So I'm going to be happy to help and sit down and talk with you a little bit about how it works and let's see what we can do.
Okay, yeah, so I'll, I'll get back with you. That's all right. We're.
I'll come back and give you a card.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Patricia St. Louis, thirty-seven Circle C. I spoke on this back when the meeting happened about keeping things open to consider like larger lots or like little ranches, the areas, agricultural areas. Um, I mentioned my neighbors. I personally think the city council does have the flexibility. I thought you did the night I brought it up. This gentleman is talking about a whole neighborhood that was built improperly, which was allowed by previous councils or administrations. And I don't think they should be penalized because that was allowed. They want safety for their cars, their well-being. I really think council can consider perhaps this neighborhood or other neighborhoods were built improperly. I don't think that should be on the citizens and I think council does have the power as one who used to sit up there. We dealt with a lot of things and what I was always the most proud of was that the council really listened to the citizens and tried to take their interests to heart and not just follow paper rules. I mean, yeah, rules are there, codes are there, but back when there were code enforcement issues, when I think Jerry was mayor, people said code enforcement is coming into our backyards, doing all this stuff. That council decided, no, we don't want that going on. We're going to be reactive, not proactive. So I think you all do have the power to consider this situation. And just one FYI, like a month or two ago at a meeting when Board of Adjustment, maybe it was that meeting when it was brought up, as I was leaving council or else it was the next day at another meeting, but a member of the Board of Adjustment told me, um, well, I said, oh, I said to her, I said, oh, my neighbor was going to have a garage or something built in his backyard. I got a letter, but I didn't really think I needed to do anything about it because I don't want to complain. If my neighbor wants his garage closer to fence between our properties, I don't really care. But then she said, oh, well, staff really wasn't into that, so we turned it down. So I'm not blaming staff or anyone else, but I just think you guys are the final say and I think you should really consider this. Thanks.
Patty?
Yes?
So your neighbor is following the correct process and pulling permit to get a garage built, right?
But was turned down for the.
No, I'm just saying, he's following.
I assume so, since he came before the Board of Adjustment.
Right, but we're being asked to grandfather something in that goes for the life of the property.
Right.
Not for the property owner.
Well, I don't think those properties are going to be rebuilt or changed since they were built wrongly twenty years ago.
I, I understand all that. I get it, but, um, you know.
It's not their fault. The city leaders before you guys, before all of us, let that happen twenty years ago. So I think you as city leaders have the opportunity right now to step in and do what was right since it wasn't done then.
But I guess my bigger question is when does it stop? Because then there's going to be another group that comes in.
Well, if the city allowed bad building setups and bad development plans.
So we should just throw everything out?
Look at all the developments in town. Most of them are probably compliant with how things should be built. You know, mobile home parks are like they are. This isn't exactly a mobile home park. But if it takes looking at more situations, I personally think the council should do that. You guys were elected by the people to represent the people, not the code book per se. Yeah, I know a lot of people might want the code book followed, but I think you need to really consider individuals and their life and how you affect them with your decisions. Thanks.
So my email address is sthompson@fountaincolorado.org and I have received zero emails on the carport issue from anyone. I've seen tons of stuff on social media, but I don't respond to social media. Sthompson@fountaincolorado.org is my email address. So if you'd like to write me on this issue, I'd be really happy to have a discussion with you or a meeting.
Okay. Are you going to come up or are you just standing there? Because we need to get moving on. We have two others for public comment.
I think this is a big deal because these folks, um, are obviously approaching one hundred years of age. I don't know what their financial situation is, but it's going to cost them five, six hundred dollars or more to get this approved. And I do think council, and I think planning can make adjustments. Planning can decide.
They can. I guess my, I guess I go back to my earlier statement is they didn't follow the rules in the first place. And that's the problem we're having with everybody who has a problem with it now is they didn't follow the rules in the first place. They just went and did it. Um, and so, and then we're just supposed to have a sympathetic ear because I chose not to follow the, the, the rules. They wouldn't have this if they would have done, followed the process in the first place. Uh, they would have, they would have gone through variance at, at that time, um, and, and let the chips fall as they may then.
And I, and I do see your point, Gabe, but it's twenty years old and more. And so all of a sudden now, they have to, to change their lifestyle.
What about the people that did it the right way?
Good for them. Good for them. Good for them. And, but there's always going to be, there will always be those who don't, Sam, always. And a lot of them, for a lot of them, it is survival. Now, don't, please don't scoff because it is survival.
If we let this happen, then the person that buys that house isn't going to take care of it like these people have been. So then what do we do with that?
Well, we don't, we don't know that.
We don't know that because, yep, you're right. And so that, that's to me, if they followed the procedure like they should have, it's a done deal.
Well, I, I'm just asking for leniency with a lot of these folks here in Fountain because I do think you guys can make a difference.
Um, we've, we've, uh, I'm going to use the term, we grandfathered the ones who didn't follow the rules in the first place. And so we've done that. Uh, we're asking Regional Building to try to waive the fees for us. Doubt they'll do that, but at least we're asking. Um, we understand that, that bringing something up that really they weren't allowed to do in the first place and trying to, and this is, this is the problem with a lot of this stuff that happens up here. Um, people out there think where there's some kind of ulterior, um, motive that, that is, I don't know what, what the deal is. Um, the intent again here was to allow people to do something to help protect, um, and their property, whatever it may be. I get it. And at some point, and it's going to happen from, it, it's been happening, it's going to continue happening. Um, it doesn't matter what, what happens as we, we move forward as a city. It happens in all cities that things are going to slip through cracks. Things are going to, are not going to work all, all at the same time. We've got to figure those out as they come along. Um, but at the same time, we're going to have everyone come in because now, well, you give it to them, why can't I have it? Um, and there's, there's got to be a point when we have to say, there's a process, we need to follow the process to be fair to everybody. Because I can't say, okay, yeah, I, you know, um, I will, we'll give it to you and then someone comes in, well, I didn't get this because of that. Um, you know, so at what point do you have to also toe the line? It's not as easy as, I'm going to sit back here, I'm going to have all my comments, I'm just, you know, get on social media, say all the negative things about everybody. Um, I mean, we, we have both sides of this world. We have to figure out what we're going to do that's going to benefit thirty thousand people um, and in the most, in the most fair way as possible. Um, and everyone's going to see it that way.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Ms. Mininger.
Deb Stott Mininger, community advocate, citizen scientist. And just a two second comment within my three minutes that I've seen so many times in the last ten years when both Board of County Commissioners as well as city council members in a variety of cities, including Fountain, have bent over backwards to make variances and adjustments for developers. That same drive should be there for the individual, uh, people who are living in places where those variances and adjustments were done in areas that would put them out of compliance no matter what they did.
And I disagree with that statement because we have developers who are fighting us all the time.
Just a, just a.
No, no, because your assertion is, the assertion is, um, and the assertion is, is that we just give everything to developers, which is totally wrong. Um, I, I know there are two developers here that are, that probably don't agree with you and, and that we've given them everything. We pushed their buttons, made them follow the rules as well. And so, um, the assertion is, is flat out wrong. Uh, and I think we do look out for, for our citizens in, in the best way we can. We're not going to make everybody happy. We haven't, uh, but we're doing the best we can up here.
So along that line, along that line, on another project, okay? Um, at the PPSCG that I went to, I did, uh, point out, because for me, that's my point of contact that I use for the military communities that attend those meetings and point out that the, the problem that we have with trains, because they might not have been aware of that, and that it does cause the, the military who have to go to Fort Carson uh, in the mornings and come back in the afternoons, they're looking for the most reliable route to there. Academy, South Academy of Art has become a zoo that they've turned it to a flashing red light during those high volume moments. And so they take, um, Highway sixteen off of, you know, east of, from, I've been coming east of the, um, Midian Road up there in our wonderful, you know, uh, areas for the families, you know, to the west side of Fountain. But they're looking for the most reliable route. And reliable is not that sometimes they get stuck for two hours behind a whole bunch of cars or in traffic because nobody can move because the trains parked there. And so I said that for the reliability and our security of our military personnel is important that we do not become roadkill in this railroad industrial park project. So in addition to speaking with some of the people I spoke to before, uh, a few years ago, um, and reviewing some of the information that we discussed, I discussed with them at that time, um, I, you know, shared that information with the military community as well because this does put them at risk if they ever have to have those military personnel there in a hurry, what are they going to do? They've only got those two routes as an alternate and it is causing a lot of problems for them. They can't take advantage of the other options like going at egg at one twenty-eight onto that even when it's rebuilt because it's not going to solve the problem with the railroad tracks and it's sad. But my concerns are also that we already have a lot of traffic on there and when, when Fountain is considering their participation, and I believe this was part of the area that Fountain just annexed lately, right? Is that part of Fountain where this is going to be? The railroad and industrial park.
Sorry, in Fountain.
Okay, I'm saying that is part of Fountain that it's going to be built on, right? It's part of the city of Fountain?
Yes.
Okay, because when I saw some of the estimates on some of the work and they're going to invite a third party, um, train company to participate in it as well, this was in the documentation I was reading through, we have an awful lot of traffic. You know, the payload's going south, the empty car's coming north. We have quite a bit of traffic there some days. How are we going to have increased that by how much? And they're talking just a hundred million to start. That doesn't include building all the different places there like they depend on for these bond loans and stuff. I, we're already in what, eleven million dollars worth of debt for what started out as four and a half million up at, on South Academy. And we still don't have that supposed emergency exit and egg entrance on B Street yet. It's just a dirt road down there. I don't know if the fire trucks can go up and down it, but if anything happens that they're cut off on the other way, they wouldn't be able to come up the, that way, the second way that's supposed to be there. And we're getting involved with this and I'm seeing these numbers and they're getting kind of scary. Can Fountain really afford to have this kind of deal going on in a way that will be detrimental for the normal business in Fountain as it is? Those railroad tracks are very essential, yes, but overload it and you're going to alienate and make life just a living hell basically for people trying to commute from the west side of Fountain to the east side or even to get over to Highway twenty-five and go where they need to go. So this needs to be taken into consideration. We have an unfinished project up there that was supposed to be done in twenty fifteen and it's still not finished. Do we really want to get into something that's going to be one, two, three hundred million? How much of that is going to be on our books in Fountain as municipal bonds? That available money for, uh, Board of County Commissioners, just, uh, just, uh, for, four districts approved spending up to two hundred and seventy million dollars for those four projects, those four districts. approved, spending up to $270 million for those four projects, those four districts. We're gonna go the way of Detroit, Michigan if we're not careful. That's my opinion and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Beckett?
Just real quick, Mrs. Beckett's coming up. Go ahead. I think it might be valuable, Scott, to have Kimberly Bailey possibly come and give the presentation to council that she gave at PPACG to explain the project and how it is being funded.
Okay. Ms. Beckett?
Hi. I'm Audrey Beckett. My address is 411 Lakewood Circle in Colorado Springs. Reason I'm coming before you is we've been working for the last two years on Old Dominion Freight Lines, trying to get Old Dominion Freight Lines, the lots plotted, their development plan approved so that we can go ahead and build. Last month, I got a cancellation letter from them in the mail. So I've been trying for the last month to see, can we somehow, you know, meet their needs and, and concerns so that we can keep the deal together? This week, they said no. So I thought I would come before you and read you with a very short, half a page letter as to why they canceled. And they said, number one is the light poles. They have to have 40-foot light poles out in their large yard where all the trucks are and the planning department says no. 25-foot lots, lights are the highest you can put in any parking lot and they classify that as a parking lot, the truck maneuvering area. They also say that their development plan review that they submitted, they got back a 17-page letter detailing extensive comments, concerns, and required modifications. In addition to indicating that substantial additional review would need to be done by multiple governmental agencies. And so they're looking at another, maybe a year, who knows? It's taken two years to get this far and they said they're just not willing to put any more time or money into it and so the whole project is dead. Well, that's a sad thing for me, but I think it's also a sad thing for the city because they had envisioned building a beautiful building. They were gonna spend about $6 million. They had additional jobs they were gonna provide, a lot of different property tax revenue because the price of the building is high, and give a very good look to Bandly Drive with a nice big building and, and a good look to that whole industrial thing. They were also gonna finish the widening, that was part of the contract, of Bandly Drive so that we now have the whole Section 3 of Bandly, all curb and guttered, all widened by 10 feet and all consistent as you drive down there. And this, if this was just one thing, I wouldn't even come before you, but this is a trend. In June of 2016, I brought a project for the land next door, Old Dominion Freight Lines, and it was, they have a manufacturing plant and they build brand-new utility trailers. And then they have 46 locations across the United States where they sell these brand-new utility trailers. Some of them are closed, some of them are open. And so we spent over a year with different plans and things, working with the planning department with Kristy, trying to get that plan approved. No, we had to have all the lot paved, then of course it was impervious, so then you had to do a lot larger detention facility. When you have gravel between the utility trailers, then all the water goes down in. You don't need nearly as large a detention facility and, and it's a much easier build. Everything that's on gravel is then considered storage. You only get 15% of your lot's storage. So all the trailers that they had for sale on the lot were considered storage. They're trailers for sale. Anyway, so that deal cratered after about a year. And the, the planning department, the same thing that happened with these people, the answer is if it's not in our code book, you have to go to a variance committee. But the variance committees, as most of you know, are comprised of three citizens who really aren't experts in the field. They're good main people who want to contribute and do helpful things for the city of Fountain. But they defer, obviously, to the experts and the experts are your planning department. So I think that there needs to be a look into the whole planning department and how it works and the latitude that you give them to make changes. Because a thing like a 40-foot light pole that is required, and they just finished their facility in Denver in one year, of course, has 40-foot light poles out there in their yard. And these kind of things shouldn't need a variance committee for this and a, and a city council and, and things for this. You've got a good planning commission, you've got a planning department, and there should be latitude as they look at, you don't have other truck terminals in the city. So there's certain things that you do with a truck terminal or allow that wouldn't necessarily be in a code book or you had thousands of pages if every single thing had to be in a code book. But the planning department is enforcing code book as though it is law. Anything outside of that then takes quite a bit of time. The other thing I wanted to mention is when we went through the whole plating process, we knew that would take a while, so I asked if they could run their development plans concurrently. They paid their fees, they submitted their development plan, but the city refused, the planning department, let me be clear, refused to look at the development plan until my plans were approved for the plating of the ground. So there couldn't be anything going on concurrent, like, okay, we deal with the 40-foot light poles, we deal with the, the other 17 pages of things they needed to deal with. At the same time, we're going through that long plating process. I think you should set up that kind of a thing. They're gonna say they don't have staff, they're paid to do it. Our fees were, I don't know, 10,000 or something. We've got over 50, no, close to 60,000 in engineering costs on this thing already. They have over 200,000. And then it goes for bust because why? Because you've got a code book that has no latitude for your planning department. So I would just ask that you guys look at that and, and make some changes. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you. Thank you for your suggestions. I mean, it's worth a look. And, and you know, that's something that we've talked about over the years of, and I, you know, planning is, is doing the best it can in trying to get through these processes quicker and, and I know it's hard and I know, probably doesn't mean a whole lot to you at this point, but go ahead, Todd.
Well, Audrey and I had a good discussion today and we've had many in the past and, you know, I've, I've vocalized to both Audrey and, and city council and others that I have no qualms about making those administrative decisions. I'll make those bad boys whenever we can, but the systems are set in place so that there is, is citizen oversight because there is many municipalities, counties, other things where people feel like decisions are made based off of if staff likes somebody or not. So one of the reasons they have those in place is just quality control and oversight so that the staff doesn't have the ability of showing favoritism over anyone. So, yeah, I, I would agree. I would like to have a little more flexibility to be able to do what, what Audrey talked about, but what's been brought up, many people have said they would prefer to have that citizen oversight and I completely understand why that's there. So, I mean, it's really, we're, we're probably not gonna be able to find a perfect balance to that. We're gonna sit down with Audrey and with both engineering and, and planning and see if we can work out if there's any communication end of things that we can do better. So we're gonna make that happen for her. But if, you go back to just that simple question, do you wanna give staff more ability to make those administrative decisions or continue to have the citizen oversight? And to be quite honest with you, I'm good either way.
Well, I don't know. I liken it to the national vote, the popular vote. My guy didn't win, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch the script so that my guy can win next time. And that's exactly what happens with, with this and this conversation tonight. I didn't get what I wanted, so I need to go another route to get what I want. Or I didn't win this time and, and somebody else did. And, and that's the hard part about trying to make these decisions up here is, you know, you, you gotta look at both sides and figure out, and how, again, it goes back to fair and equitable to everybody who goes through the process. If we don't stick to the process, someone's gonna get left behind. And, and the process may not be good for me and it may not be fair to me, but if I was treated by the process, for me, and maybe I, I got messed up values, but if, if I follow the rules and the processes as they're laid out, at least I, I did what I was supposed to do and, and I can go from, from there. I mean, I have too much trust in people, I guess.
You know, one thing, Mayor, just, just, as everybody knows, and everybody knows my, my prior career, there's a lot of value to checks and balances and that's, that's really what our, our processes are in place. Staff makes recommendations, but actual citizen boards, planning commission, board of adjustments, city council, that's the checks and balances, which are good.
And you know, I, I get your point, Ms. Beckett, about, you know, well, the three people, they, they look to staff with the expertise and that, and I think that's where the, the crux is in, in citizen government, you know, and, and citizens who volunteer for these boards and commissions and, and do all these things, they, they know this much about this much. And, and I can say that about everybody up here as well, you know? And so we have to rely on those experts and, and, you know, to, to, to guide us in the right directions and, you know, I know, it's, it's worth a look and, and I'll be interested in what comes up out of that conversation with, with Todd and, and if there's some things that need to be changed, let's, let's look at it. But I, I lost all the comments, so go ahead, Mr. Rick.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay.
I just wanna add something for council, for Ms. Beckett, and for the public at large. Just today, staff posted on Facebook the link to where we are redoing our ordinance, our zoning ordinance. Some of the issues that Ms. Beckett talked about, some of the issues that the people in Comanche talked about, about houses, where we, the city is having a expert rewrite the zoning ordinance. What I would encourage Ms. Beckett for you to do and for all the citizens out there and, and council is to go to that website, look at the link, see the changes. If you see something you see needs to be changed, now is the time to do it when we're going through this process. Let's take advantage of the citizens that are giving us input, try and get the regulation right the first time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thanks.
I'm back. I know, I'm Patty St. Louis Fountain Valley News. In case you all don't see the paper tomorrow, I just want to tell you, you should. We have a really nice story by our bird guy, Doug Harling. He contacted Gabby and Todd and let them know at a site, I'm not gonna mention where it is because I know Doug doesn't like looky-loos out there looking for burrowing owls, worried about traffic and danger. However, a site where the city is gonna have some commercial development going on in the near future also had burrowing owls. The night it came up at council, I let Doug know because I knew he's an expert on this and he said that there are federal laws about it. So he contacted Gabby and Todd, met with them. I came out. They worked out a really great deal, so the owls will have migrated by the time any construction probably starts, so it's not gonna hinder them. And I just wanna draw the now.
So if they come back, they'll just be like, never mind.
They'll go to a different prairie dog hole. If there's a building at that site or construction underway, the owls will just go to other holes that are open and further away.
They take over prairie dogs?
I think there's a 150-yard limit where they can be. But anyway, kudos to Todd and Gabby and, you know, it's just really good news for the city and good news for your staff, so.
I didn't even know they were there.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So that, that had nothing to do with the Old Dominion thing?
No.
Okay.
It was public.
Okay. All right. You know, it's, it's not easy and everyone wants to have an opinion, but, you know, the, and I, you know, Greg said at once, you, you, you're gonna make 50% of the people mad on one side, you're gonna make 50% of the people happy on the other. There's no, there's no answer. I was talking to a lady about the single caller discussion that we're having and she said, well, you guys are turning into dictatorship. You're gonna make, I said, we're not making you do anything. We're gonna go with one and if you choose to, you can. You can go with your own if you like. And, good Lord, I lost the whole anecdote. I don't know. I lost it. But, you know, the, the thing is, is, you know, I, I also had with, with a trash company that, you know, was very critical of the citizens group that got, that's been working on this and have come up with the ideas and, you know, and it was, well, they have nothing better to do. I said, you know, they have completely a million better things to do, but people who volunteer and put themselves out to, to better the community, they're, they're working for free. I remember what it was now. She said, well, I don't, I don't get paid to work on, on the city's budget. I said, neither do I. I get affected by all the decisions that we make up here as well and they're not for my benefit, they're for what I hope to be the entirety of the city's benefit. And, and is everyone gonna be able to benefit from that? Probably not. We don't have a world that works that way. If it did, I don't think we'd be up here. But fact of the matter is, is we're up here trying to make a, make a difference for our community because we, we enjoy our community, we love our community. This, this is, this takes a lot of time out of, out of, out of my life that my family and I have committed to, to this community. So the assertions that, that we, we favor others over others is, is flat out wrong. I, I strongly, firmly believe that we're up here doing something for the better of the community. So sorry, we can't make everybody happy, but it's just the way it's gonna, it's gonna be. If you have an interest, we have three seats open up this, this fall, give it a shot and see what it's like. But oftentimes it takes away from the narrative and, and we don't have the facts anymore or we have the facts now and it, it doesn't feed into our story anymore. So I, I do suggest and urge anybody who, who wants to give back to their community to, to give a shot. It's not that easy. It's not, and it's not, it's not for the lighthearted either. So, anyway, we're gonna go ahead and move on. We spent a lot of time on public debate. We're gonna go to consent agenda. We have items A, B, C, and D. All items listed in our consent are to be considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which case item may be removed and considered separately a discretion of the council. I have two lights. May wrote them.
Motion to approve. Sent.
Ms. Thompson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second for approval. Please vote.
Six yes. Motion carried.
Item eight, A, old business, second reading of ordinance number 1735, an ordinance amending Section 2, connection installation of system, the regulations governing water service as adopted by the city council of Fountain, January 2018 regarding deferral or waiver of fees constituting an economic benefit to the city. Mr. Fink?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the senior staff, and members of the public, this is the second reading of ordinance 1735, which was approved on first reading by a vote of six to nothing two weeks ago. There have been no changes at all to this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions?
My question just was, when this came the first time, there was a time limit on it and I'm not seeing it on here, that if, if the property was sold within three years, but even if it wasn't, FER was committing to pay this money, these monies back to the city within the three-year timeline. Is that, did that get included?
It was a verbal.
Yes, I understand it was verbal.
And, and I can't speak for FER. It was, it was the representative from FER that, that stated that. They anticipated that this property would change hands within three years, at which time the lien would come due.
Right.
So I, I can't speak to that.
Okay. What are we gonna do about that? Because that was part of the discussion.
I think probably the best thing to do is, if you do, if you vote to approve this, then just vote with a stipulation that it's paid back for the three years. And you could, you could do the ordinance approval that way. And then it would just be contingent on that.
Okay. Exactly. From what I remember, that was discussed and, and everyone agreed with that.
Yeah.
And I thought Ms. Bailey did as well, so.
Yeah. I remember that being brought up.
So, I, if, if you wanna make the motion and just include that, I would do that. Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Okay.
You looking at me?
All right. Whoever.
Okay. Move to approve, Troy, help me out with this. About a minute.
I want you to get, make the motion and then say, on.
Okay. Move to approve that with the contingency that the funds are repaid to the utilities to permit within three years, if not with change of ownership, but that FER is guaranteeing it. Does that work? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Geek?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion as second for approval with the amendment. Please vote.
Six yes. Motion carried.
Okay. Item nine, nine B, new business, first reading of ordinance 1736 and ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 1639, an amending Section 13.04.270, connection charge of chapter 13.04, water code of Title 13, public services of the Fountain Municipal Code and replacing ordinance 1639, and amending Section 13.04.270, connection charge of Chapter 13.04, water code of Title 13, public services of the Fountain Municipal Code regarding deferral fees for qualifying affordable housing. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to start off by saying, thanks to Curtis and Mike, they brought to my attention that there's errors in the citation of the ordinance above. So nothing's different within the body of the ordinance, but when we bring back the second reading, we will make the changes in the way it cited up in the title of it. But if you recall, going back several months, we had representatives from Habitat for Humanity that approached city council, reminding the council that their deferrals on the affordable home, the affordable housing for the utility fees were really going to be ending in September. So they requested that those be extended, and that they potentially add some more. So this, right now, is coming before you to request on their behalf for a continuing deferral for the remainder. If the council recalls, going back to 2014, the city approved up to 30 deferrals because they were working in a neighborhood where there was some need there. By the way, although I'm referring to Habitat for Humanity because they do affordable housing, this really would be open to anyone who's doing affordable housing, who's meeting the requirements of the ordinance, and then who would ask for the deferral. That just, at this point right now, ends up being Habitat for Humanity. Out of those 30 that the council granted, they've used 28 so far. So they're requesting an extension for those two, the two unused. And then they also indicate they have approximately 10 other lots that they're going to be doing similar-type housing on. So they're really requesting is a deferral extension of another 12, a grand total of 12, the two plus 10. So I don't know if there's any questions that the council may have. I know we've had this discussion before, but I just want to make sure we got this in front city council, and see if we can approve that for, again, affordable housing. Although I keep referring to Habitat for Humanity, it is for affordable housing.
Scott, I just want to make sure that people in the audience understand, we are not waiving or giving away the money for these tap fees. We're only deferring it until later time in the process. And the point to do that is so that Habitat can get more affordable, or whichever nonprofit comes in to do this can get more affordable housing built in our community faster, and by saving them that approximately $17,000 per house upfront, because we're deferring it to when the house is sold, or if they lose the home for some reason, or get their water turned off. Then that helps them to be able to build more affordable homes quicker.
That's right. And that $17,000 is at the maximum, right? If they take advantage of some of our conservation programs, that actually would be less. But regardless, it would be deferred until property changes ownership.
Right.
You got it.
Thank you.
And again, you know, when I was speaking at that poverty and homelessness thing last week, that was one of the, this is one of those things that I brought up in our attempt to help those who are struggling and trying to find a place to live. And, you know, the tap fees, which the developers hate, you know, we've stood pretty firm on those because water is such a valued commodity that this is one that we decided to, you know, let's help those people. So that, you know, if it is $17,000, that's off of that home that they don't have to pay now. And so granted, the next person who moves in may have to pay it, but will have to pay it, but it does help those families, so. If another company, let's say it's just company ABC, it's not Habitat, they would have to come and request, or is this including them?
This includes them as well.
Okay. So how do they, how do we know that they would qualify? Like, is there a standard that they have?
Mike has a better ask on that.
The deferral goes on the property.
Right.
Not to the company, so.
But it was sponsored by.
Right.
Yes, well, I think it's a common term. It was sponsored by Habitat for Humanity, but the ordinance is structured so that any affordable housing nonprofit that meets certain standards, and they're outlined in the original ordinance and repeated in the ordinance that is before you tonight, could qualify for that. And that is qualified through, I believe, attorney agency, isn't it?
Yes.
So if some other organization that was providing similar, provided for it under this ordinance and was certified by that county agency, it could take advantage of this.
Okay, that was my question. Okay. Okay, so it's not exclusive to Habitat, all of them are the ones who kind of brought the ID and kind of went with it?
That's right.
Okay, any other questions?
For 12 deferrals, and that's up to five years. We're just extending another five-year window.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to approve.
Go ahead, Mayor, protest.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second for approval. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9C, am I just going to read this?
You just the title.
The title? Right, I was going to read the whole book. Okay, is this a resolution or ordinance? How are we doing this?
It's an emergency.
Okay, item 9C, it's an emergency ordinance, ordinance number 1737, an emergency ordinance of the City of Fountain, Colorado, approving issuance of its water and electric revenue bond, Series 2018, for the purpose of financing the construction of certain water system-related capital projects, and described herein funding the reserve account or purchasing a reserve account contract, and paying the cost of issuance of the bond, authorizing the forms of such bonds and other details with respect to such bonds and the payment thereof, providing for payment of the bonds from a portion of the revenues of the city's electric, water, and waste power utility enterprise and making certain covenants in connection therewith, and providing details and documents in connection with bonds which shall be effective immediately upon publication. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. You're not having deja vu. You've already passed this ordinance originally, it was 1731, passed on first and second reading on May 28th and June 11th. The problem that we ran into is realistically, a few minutes before council, we realized that this, the final publication had not taken place, and we are getting ready to close on these bonds. And the language in our city charter says that the effective date is five days after publication, which is going to be tomorrow. And so that the ordinance wouldn't be in effect until after we would need it. And so we were faced with basically a whole deal blowing up. And so this is not a provision of the city charter that we use very often, but we're coming to you.
Um, Dan, uh, sorry.
Nobody likes to hear their own voice on tape, I guess. Yeah, it's working. So, is that really how I sound?
Slight delay to bleep you out.
Yeah, I guess so. So this is, we are kind of invoking the emergency provisions of our charter and adopting ordinances in an emergency fashion, what that allows to do, because we have not provided notice. For this particular ordinance is that it would allow, it's substantially the same as 1731, but would allow the effective date to be as a publication, which would be tomorrow, and would allow the deal to move forward. So it's honestly just a clerical error that it was never published, and we'll remedy that, but we need to do it this way so that it's effective tomorrow, and we can get the deal done. Any questions about that?
Yes, the mayor has a copy.
Can you read fast?
And if you'll remember, it's, I mean, it's probably the original ordinance, it's probably like 40 or so pages long. And so it's substantially the same. The only things that have changed are, you'll see the first three recitals that explain why the emergency ordinance is needed, and then towards the end of the ordinance, the effective date, instead of saying five days after publication, it's upon publication, have been the only changes.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? Okay, seen them? Counsel? Mr. Geek?
Move to approve, ordinance 1737.
And Mayor protest.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second for approval. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are on to item 10, correspondence, comments, and ex officer reports. I'll start with city manager, Ms. Trainer.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. And the first one here is primarily for council member Thomas. I know we've been trying to schedule a meeting with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. I just want to let folks know, we're still trying to get that scheduled. For some reason, it's been a tough thing with the state of Colorado. I'm not sure why. But just wanted to pass on that. August 13th, the city council will have our biannual strategic plan update here in the council meeting. That'll be the first one we're doing, and so we'll be doing that presentation then. August 27th, Peaks and Pines will be doing their soft opening. Just make sure I let the council know about that as well. 22nd.
Building looks nice. Deputy city manager.
The mayor mentioned the community meeting we had last week, and I want to thank those council members that were there. I really enjoyed the meeting. Well-attended. I know the roadway focus group, that was our sixth meeting over the last six or eight months, and we were happy to see everybody here. So great back and forth. I've heard a good meeting from both sides of the issue that were there. Just want to remind everybody, we're just still in the fact gathering stages at this point. Have no clue how this will move forward. And we stated this at the beginning of the meeting, part of our responsibility and job is to bring new ideas and new, different ways to look at things to those meetings. And I appreciated the opportunity of just a good question and answer. So I look forward to, again, we will be having another meeting after we do get more information in that we're able to look at apples to apples. So I look forward to that opportunity as well, but appreciate those we're able to make it.
Okay, Troy?
Nothing for me.
Chief Mackden?
I'll say that we're well on our way with our planning for Labor Day event at the fire station, so we'll have more information coming here very soon.
Okay, thank you. Chief Heber?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Mr. Trilch, anything?
Nothing.
Anything from IT? Everything work okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great.